Well, welcome to the -- oh, are we okay to go, Charmaine? Okay, great. Welcome to the regular city council meeting for the City of Bellevue for on December 11th, 2023. Uh, city clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Thank you. Me, Lynn Robinson.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Stowe.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
I'm here, I'm here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
My pleasure. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as you know, we have a commendation for Councilmember Robertson to celebrate her 14 years on the Bellevue City Council, and I've asked Councilmember Lee if he would turn off his phone and read it to us.
Very well said. Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you. All right, thank you, Mayor. It is my pleasure, at the same time, uh, I was saddened to lose our esteemed Councilmember Jennifer Robertson, so I will, uh, I'm honored to read the following commendation. Whereas Councilmember Jennifer Robertson was first elected to the Bellevue City Council in 2009 and has served on the council for 14 years, including two years, 2012 and 2013, as deputy mayor. And whereas Jennifer helped Bellevue plan for the future, both as a member of the council and previously as a member of the Planning Commission, she provided leadership on the downtown livability and Wilberton planning efforts, was chair of the Planning Commission during planning for Belray Transformation, and championed successful park levies and an updated master plan for Airfield Park. And whereas from her work to co-write the council vision to providing the catalyst for a neighborhood's element in the city's comprehensive plan update process, Councilmember Robertson has demonstrated steadfast dedication to community engagement and a passion for amplifying the voice of residents and addressing their concerns. And whereas Councilmember Robertson worked on light rail, including the council's light rail leadership group and the city's best practices committee, have made an immeasurable impact on the future of transportation in Bellevue, the East Side, and the Purgisun region. And whereas beyond her civic responsibilities, Jennifer has devoted her time and energy to the service of youth in our community through her involvement with the Girl Scouts and B.E. and Bellevue Schools. By sharing her leadership skills, wisdom, and experiences, she has been a positive influence on the next generation of leaders, instilling in them the values of community service, empowerment, and resilience. And whereas in recognition of Councilmember Robertson's remarkable contributions to Bellevue, we extend our heartfelt appreciation to her unwavering dedication, leadership, and commitment to public service. Now therefore, I, Conrad Lee, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor, and on behalf of the City Council, do this 11th day of December in the year 2023, hereby commend Jennifer Robertson for her achievements and express our collective gratitude for her exceptional service and wish her continued success with all her future endeavors. Signed, Mayor Robertson.
Thank you. So we'll start with Councilmember Stokes. We'll just come down the dais, and then we will have staff present you with a sign. We'll do a picture, and then you can talk, or maybe we'll have you talk, and then we'll, I don't know, we'll work it out.
Well, I appreciate being, starting off on this. We are two attorneys, and we work together on, and sometimes the attorney's role was kind of fun, sometimes we worked at it and all, but I think that's very important, and I learned a lot from Jennifer. I had worked with Jennifer prior to coming on here when I was on the Parks Board, and she was a liaison, and then we met and talked on several other issues. And then most importantly was when I was elected in 2012, it was right after Sound Transit, and of course she went through and led us getting all of that put together so we could have Sound Transit coming in, but we worked hard with the committee, it was put together, three people working with the leadership from Sound Transit. So Kevin Wallace, Jennifer Robertson, and I were selected, and Conrad Lee was the mayor and appointed at that time, and we were a leadership group working with the Sound Transit group. And it was a tiered thing, and we spent, what, four, five years putting a thing together, getting, and Jennifer always had this thing about exceptional, uh, what's the term?
Legal.
Yeah, legal term, okay. Anyhow, so it was a great experience, and we've worked together on just a lot of things. The Lake Washington, I mean, the Lake Sammish issues, it took us seven years to do something so much that it, when the ecology came in and said, "Well, every eight years you have to redo this," since it took eight years, you don't have to do it this time. But I really enjoyed working with her. There were times when, like attorneys do, we had disagreements. I say maybe, you know, 90% of the time we worked together, 10% of the time we, you know, were lawyers. And, but we really worked together hard, and I really appreciated, learned a lot from her, and it's been a great privilege, and I was a little bit shocked when you weren't going to run again, and I'm looking forward to working with you because I know you're going to work with us. And I appreciate it very much, and appreciate you, and best to you.
Go ahead.
Oh, wow, Jennifer, you know, I was thinking about what I wanted to say, and really it's congratulations and thank you for 20 years. I didn't realize when we met in 2002, that was when you first came to Bellevue, and our two daughters were in the Fish Pond preschool together. And then I think both of us got involved with our children's lives and didn't reconnect again until I got on the Transportation Commission. And then I think the first policy work we did together was you and I and Mila and Ty being tasked with writing the pro statement for the transportation safety and congestion relief levy. And the fun it was to work with you on coming up with a statement on something that was just so crucial to our city to make sure that our transportation and safety works for communities. And what I appreciate the most about you is that you do the work. And I think like we heard out in the reception, it's not necessarily, you know, super exciting work, but it's really important work, and I know that we count on you to dig in the details and really know our codes really well, and make sure that what we're doing, that we understand before we embark on policy, what some of the nuances are, and make sure that we are very thoughtful in our decision-making. And so I really appreciate that about you, and I know that when you call about a policy piece, that you're looking for information and ideas and really understanding an issue, and so I appreciate that. And I wish all the best for you and Scott and your daughters in the years ahead, and I know that your, the next part of your journey will, I'm sure, continue to include serving lots of communities and cities in the future, so thank you.
Well, okay, it's my turn. Well, Jennifer and I went back a long way, and, you know, as people have said, including Cameron out there, we have a lot of great council members. We have traditionally, Bellevue has probably the best elected officials, and all the cities I've known and been to during the last 30 years going to nationally leave cities, so I've known probably hundreds, if not thousands, of cities. And so, but Bellevue is such a great place, and, but there are many of us also, we cannot speak all, you know, to each of us, but I can speak for Jennifer for sure. And I pride myself, one thing is that I know how to pick the right people. I know who are the capable, who are people who actually are the best among the best. And when I was mayor, I picked, I chose Jennifer and Karen and John Stokes to be on the Sound Transit team, making sure that we are addressing the public's interests and concerns. It doesn't mean that we are not, we don't like Sound Transit, or we do, we object to it, but we want to be sure it's done right, because I think that's when the quality of Bellevue is, we do things right. And so I think Jennifer, you know, as a lawyer, as a municipal lawyer, as a land use attorney, she has definitely demonstrated ability to carry out and know what she's doing, what she does, and she is a wonderful asset during my, you know, term as the mayor, and she's my deputy mayor, so I completely relied, relied on her and to do the wonderful thing. And as Cameron mentioned, that's just after the economic downturn and on the right, after through the tightening of the bell, and we just, you know, did the Belray corridor, so it's a lot of the things is uncertain economically, and, you know, all the things happening. So I really appreciate what she has done, and so I shouldn't really have much more to say, what's already been said of her accomplishment. But the key is Bellevue does the right thing with the right people, we pick the right people, right person to do the right thing, and she is on the top of my list. Thank you, Jennifer, we'll miss you, and I'm sure we'll continue to come back to get you to help us for free as I is attorney. Thank you very much, Jennifer. Thanks, Mayor.
So you and I first met about 14 years ago when you were campaigning, and I think you were at Conrad's campaign event, you were working the room. And I remember I wanted to tell you about a concern I had, and you whipped out this little notebook and you wrote it down, and I felt so listened to, and I thought you were so responsive, and I appreciated your energy, and I voted for you. And so, you know, we've worked together in many capacities since that time, you were the liaison to the Parks Board when I was on the Parks Board. And I just, you know, we have many things, we could go on all night about what we appreciate that you've brought to the council, but I'll just tell you a few. Obviously, your insight on land use has been really helpful, particularly in certain occasions, which I really appreciated. I know that, you know, when we put together the community engagement piece for the citing a shelter, many people thought that that would make it impossible to cite a shelter, and honestly, I think it made it successful to cite a shelter. So I will always appreciate the work that you did on that. You came out very strong on women's right to choose, which I appreciate it so much. Benjamin Franklin said, "People come and go, but character stays forever." I'm gonna miss you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so, boy, you know, I've known Jennifer for a number of years now. I don't know who this boring person that people keep talking about is. Let's not forget, actually, former Mayor Chalmers, remember this, this is the council member who said, "Oh, I'm glad I'm wearing black tonight because I'm mourning for our neighborhoods." Do you remember? Oh, so I first met Jennifer when you appointed me to the Parks Board. That was really my introduction to City Hall and began my service, and, you know, I was very sad when you first announced that you were not returning, and there are countless examples that have been mentioned tonight about how you've delivered for residents and the City of Bellevue as a whole. And the council will sorely miss your values, your strategic ability, historical knowledge, and your land use expertise, first and foremost, I think, but just all the incredible attributes that have made you so special and have made you such a huge contributor, and you're going to leave behind an incredible legacy here at City Hall. I think you've done exactly what you said you were going to do in terms of getting results for residents, for businesses, for the city, protecting the quality of life for our most vulnerable working families, ensuring Bellevue remains a place where children and families feel safe. So I personally appreciate your constant support for our public safety in our city, Jennifer. I won't list all the incredible things that you've done over the years, as a lot of them have been said already, but again, we couldn't have asked for a better representative on a lot of our regional committees, and that's one of the things I'll certainly remember as well, but being at, you know, Light Rail, the traffic light grid, bike lanes, neighborhood, safety transportation funding package, it's amazing, the history and the things that you have been involved in. So bottom line, you leave a lasting legacy here at the city, and your impact will be felt for many years to come, both, I think, again, both locally and regionally, and your, I think, combination of your pragmatism, your intelligence, and results will be hard to match. So all the best in the future, and to your family, Scott and the girls, so thank you again, as been said, for sharing Jennifer so much. It's been a real honor and privilege to serve with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Robertson, I am the shortest person, shortest tenure person on here, but I guess I would say, 14 years is a long time, having served just the four, so, and I think it's a testament to your commitment to the city and the community. And I would say, given, you know, what's already been said, but just having observed, especially as a newer council member, and getting a lot of the context about land use, even though you served on the Planning Commission, you brought a lot of context that was helpful for me as well in understanding the issue that we were discussing. And so just wish you the best in your next endeavors.
Go ahead, Councilmember Robertson.
Well, I, you know, I'm very, very touched. So, yeah, I mean, I, you never do anything alone, and I've been lucky to serve with 13 different council members over the time, and everyone, a professional, every single one committed and interested in what is best for Bellevue. How to get there, we don't always agree on, but every single person has had the best interest of the city at heart, and I know our two new council members, including Councilmember Hamilton, who elect Councilmember, elect Hamilton, who will take my seat, are going to continue to govern and move forward with that same vein. So I feel like I'm leaving the city in very good capable hands of this council, as well as the two new council members, and I just am really excited to see the journey that Bellevue continues to take. It's been really such an honor to be part of, part of city building, if you will, and making this city grow in the way that it has, in ways that, you know, I guess embraces the future while respecting our past, right, I mean, from the council vision. The, you know, I'm just really excited, I'm very bullish on Bellevue, I will continue to be bullish on Bellevue, this is a great place to live, it's why I moved to Bellevue, why so many people choose to live in Bellevue, and with now our affordable housing plan, hopefully more people can choose to live in Bellevue. I'm also really proud of the city for what a great employer we are, I think we've done some really good things, particularly with regard to police, our recent police contract, our fire contracts, trying to make sure that it's a good place to work because we have an amazing staff, and we want to continue to recruit and develop the best, as we have for so long. And I have the full faith in our leadership team, that you guys are going to continue to steer Bellevue into a very successful future. Just what an honor, thank you so much, and of course, thanks to my family, all those Monday nights when my husband took care of the kids, and they were little, I got elected, they were four, seven, and 11, and now they're, my youngest isn't here because she's in finals week at Oregon State, you know, they're in, two are in college, one's finishing law school, it's just been quite a journey, and they've had to share me, and it's been, they've been huge supporters of mine all the way along, and I couldn't have done it without them either, so, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go down and we'll take a picture, and we'll have staff present you with something. Right, come, go ahead.
Thank you.
tonight. City manager, would you like to introduce what we're doing?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Charmaine, our city clerk.
We do have swearing in to conduct now, so we have Bellevue District Court Judge Lisa O'Toole here to swear in our two incumbent council members and our two council member elects.
And are you ready? Okay, so it's my honor to swear in our city council members today for City of Bellevue. Each of you, please raise your right hand, and I'll have you repeat after me. I, and please state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of this office as prescribed by law and to the best of my ability, and that I will support and maintain the constitutions of the State of Washington and of the United States of America. Congratulations.
And now we have a few documents to sign. So each of us will sign three copies. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion to approve the agenda?
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, next we have oral communications, do we have anybody signed up, city clerk?
Yes, there are six pre-registered speakers this evening, so before I start calling names, I want to go over a few of the rules that are in place for oral communications. The time period is for no longer than 30 minutes, and topics must relate to City of Bellevue government. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people not speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called. In both of those categories, the presiding officer is authorized to give preference to those who have not spoken to the council within the last 60 days, or who are going to speak to an item that will come in front of the council within the next 60 days. Speakers will be allowed to speak up to three minutes, and a maximum of three people will be able to speak to any one side of a particular topic. And with that, I will call our first speaker, who is Susan Papalardo. I believe Ms. Papalardo is joining us virtually. Ms. Papalardo, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
We can, thank you, your time begins now.
Okay, good evening, council members. My name is Susan Papalardo, and I work and play in Bellevue, and I'm the co-founder and president of the nonprofit Splash Forward. I want to start by thanking Councilmember Robertson for her 20 years of dedicated service and unwavering support for the new Bellevue Aquatic Center at Airfield Park. Tonight, you will receive an update on Bellevue Airfield Park's master plan environmental study. I want to reiterate Splash Forward's support for the Airfield Park Master Plan. As a future home of the new Bellevue Aquatic Center, much-needed all-season pickleball courts, picnic areas, playgrounds, splash pad, basketball court, open space, preservation of forested areas, and a wooded trail system that connects to existing parks and trails, the park and its facilities will be a welcome oasis for community members of all ages and abilities. Park staff and Splash Forward have shared the well-identified need for a new public aquatic center to meet Bellevue's aquatic needs, especially to address the outsized demand for swim lessons, from youth to adaptive to adult. The community process that informed the master plan and Splash Forward's own community surveys show support for the new aquatic center and the other master plan elements. Developing Airfield Park is long overdue, and is a great opportunity for design and environmental excellence by the city. We are aware of the challenges being voiced by members of the community around environmental concerns, traffic, and costs. These concerns are valid but manageable, and there is ample opportunity to address them during the next phase, which is the design phase of the master plan and aquatic center. We recognize that there will be additional costs to address some of the concerns, and know that through continued analysis of transportation, parking needs, environmental impact, and opportunities, we will make decisions that are optimized for our community, the site, and the vision we have for a best-in-class aquatic center in Bellevue. Splash Forward and our aquatics consultant, Isaac Sports Group, have supported city park staff on site analysis and rightsizing the aquatic center components and our ongoing work together. We have provided input to the traffic analysis by sharing detailed user loads and vehicle loads during peak and off-peak hours, during the week, weekends, and seasonally. Our robust schedule matrices that map out stakeholder usage for each body of water and the facility components from open to close inform our analysis. Recognizing that the area planned to site the aquatic center is a former landfill closed in 1964, it is important to note that the infrastructure to contain it was done to 1980s standards. As the site is developed, it will be done to current standards, which have evolved with new best practices that will significantly improve the site. We are confident that the processes that monitor the site today and in the future, along with the city's specialists, will ensure environmental standards and excellence will be met. We will continue to support the city with analysis and bring stakeholder and community voices to the process during the next stage, once the master plan's environmental review is completed. We look forward to the SEPA determination and continued partnership with the city and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Heidi Dean, who's joining us in person, I believe.
Dear Councilmember Robertson, I know I speak for a lot of other Bellevue residents when I say that I've been dreading this day. I kind of want to grab ahold of you and beg you not to go, but 20 years is a long time to serve your community, and I'm really glad that you're going to get to go and spend time with your family, spend time, you know, on your career, and doing the fun things that you do, and I look forward to following all of that on social media because you are not boring. On behalf of myself and so many other neighborhood folks, I want to say thank you for always asking, "How will that impact the neighborhoods?", and being that voice that reminds everyone at City Hall of the promise that council made to concentrate growth in the growth corridors before looking to the single-family neighborhoods. Downtown is Bellevue's economic driver, but the neighborhoods are the heart of Bellevue. Your colleagues mentioned how you made discussions and decisions that were made here so much better because you brought your professional expertise here, and I really appreciate everything that you brought to those discussions and decisions. I want to thank you for always treating constituents with respect, and I particularly appreciate that when I'd come to you and I'd say, "Jennifer, why the heck did you vote that way?" You never got hurt, instead you always took the time to tell me your thought process on your vote, and sometimes, you know, we still didn't agree at the end, but you always had my respect because I knew that the decisions that you made were done with careful consideration for all sides of the issue, and I always feel smarter after I talk with you because I learn something new each time. And finally, a personal note of thanks from myself and the other folks from Newport Hills who fought so hard to preserve and hopefully some to improve our neighborhood commercial district in a way that works for all involved. I want to thank you for caring enough about Newport Hills to walk the talk, you shopped at and ate at our businesses, you cared about us each time we had to fight another massive rezone attempt because you knew it wasn't what was right for the neighborhood. Thank you for sending your hubby out to find a buyer who would have made everyone happy, and I am so mad that the pandemic happened, fell apart. I hope the council colleagues that you leave behind, as well as those that are joining the council, will take up your torch and ask the city staff to do what they can to bring our shopping center owner back to the negotiation table, because so many Newport Hills residents were excited about that deal, and it checked many boxes for the comp plan update. So thank you for being our hero, and I want to wish you nothing but peace, love, and joy in your post-council life, and thank you, Robertson. in your post-council life, and thank you, Robertson family, for sharing your wonderful wife and mother with Bellevue.
The next speaker on the list is Pamela Johnston.
Pamela Johnston, I'm here today to talk about the information from Bridle Trails Community Club Board. One of the issues to talk about is Bike Bellevue. The issue is not about bikes versus cars or strict advocacy of environmental or equity. It's about pragmatic plans and offering alternatives and appropriate outreach. I'd like to mention that on Thursday, there's a meeting, of which they're telling us that we can attend to learn more information, but it's not intended for the public. It's intended for the commission to get more information, but we're not allowed to ask questions. So number one, opposition to Bike Bellevue. The Bridle Trails Community Club Board opposes Bike Bellevue Plan based on the removal of vehicle lanes in Belred and Wilburton exacerbating congestion, forecasted 0.1% increases in bike trips by 2035, and the lack of any other options in the plan. The city's plan to add 15 miles of bike lanes for $18.6 million, and 11 of those miles created by taking away vehicle travel lanes in downtown Wilburton and Belred. The second safety issue is about 140th, between 148th and 140th, 40th Street, North East 40th, between 140th, okay, the ones I just said, and Bridle Trails from 35 mph to 30 mph, reflecting the residential nature of this minor alternative. We recognize that the narrow shoulders and steep drop-offs inhibit walking. While walking is a priority for neighbors, well, for health and mobility, the street provides key access to Microsoft, public and school buses, and soon light rail station. The petition's safety in the street received the most votes in the 2018 Neighborhood Enhancement Plan Project. The project, along with traffic calming and bike lanes, have further been delayed till 2025, so we've been waiting since 2018 for this work. Reducing the speed is one tool that can be brought forward independently and once approved by council, and this is something that Transportation, we've had two meetings with them onsite, that will be coming before you sometime, so that's why I'm doing it ahead of time, and Councilmember Zahn has walked that with Bike Bellevue, Beautiful, picking up trash, and we were there together, so she can vouch for that lack of shoulder.
I'm sorry. Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Barbara Hughes, who's joining us virtually. Ms. Hughes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, your time begins now.
Bellevue resident Phyllis White, who is sick, has today sent you an update to the opposition to Bike Bellevue. This document includes 67 comments that stood out and 209 signatures from Bellevue residents and nearby cities. Please recognize that these are Bellevue residents who want their signatures and comments to be heard. Please do not regard this petition as being of less worth than emails from Seattle Bike activists. Tonight, I wish to focus on the appalling lack of outreach to Bellevue residents. City staff appear to have favored communication and outreach with Seattle Bike activists over Bellevue residents and businesses. For example, Cascade Bicycle Club, a Seattle-Magnuson Park-based organization, is the nation's largest statewide bicycling nonprofit with 10,000 members and 35 staff. They are calling on all their members to sign on to a standard pre-prepared letter with only their names, zip, and email. Are these folks actually living in Bellevue? For those with a desire to see bike lanes in all cities, this may be a lovely option, but they may not have read in detail the complicated Bike Bellevue proposal, and they will not suffer the impacts if we get this wrong. Cascade Bicycle Club is big and powerful. They are currently advertising a well-paid job vacancy for a policy and advocacy manager who will collaborate with the team to mobilize supporters to participate in campaigns, has an understanding of Seattle political landscape, and an understanding of internal City of Seattle policy process, including city council. Residents in Bellevue neighborhoods do not have 35 staff. In fact, we have none. In the neighborhoods, we are all ordinary people and volunteers. We need time to understand your complicated, layered proposals, time to try and inform our neighbors. We need you to work collaboratively to inform and educate us, not just to favor information and resources to Bike activists. My concern is not about biking. It's about your process where staff are unfairly favoring Seattle activists over Bellevue residents. This has a ripple effect. Please see attached regarding a maybe Tacoma-based Bike activist contacting another organization who then blasted out their members. I'll email it into you. So this continues whilst most Bellevue residents remain uninformed by their own city. Thank you, Barbara Hughes, Bellevue.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Joe Kunsler. Mr. Kunsler, can you hear me?
Good. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening, Bellevue City Council, the City Council of the City of Courage. I want to speak to you about intergovernmental affairs and ask you please make outreach to Sound Transit and Sound Transit Board Chair Dell Constantine to make your mayor or deputy mayor the next Sound Transit Board member. Both of you stood up against, like Ukrainian, against a hateful person who Redmond Mayor Bernie has given aid, basing, and possibly comfort Zimmerman's attacks on you. I encourage the city council to make clear where you stand on such things on both matters. I also want to reassure the City of badass Uchi, Lynn Robinson, and Jared Newrenhouse that you will never have to ask me where the hell are you when it comes to sticking up for you. You're an awesome city, and you deserve so much better than the way you've been treated at the Redmond City Council and by this troubled individual. You're wonderful people, and moving forward, I'm joyful that in the end, democratic and American values triumph tonight. I'm grateful for Councilmember Robinson's 20 years of service for public transit and civility. It is very much appreciated. Thank you. I want to close by, as always, quoting Solinsky, quote, "America and all free nations must have faith in themselves, in their strength, and in their leadership, so a dictatorship doubt their own abilities to undermine freedom. When the free world hesitates, dictatorships rejoice, and their most dangerous ambitions ripen," end quote. I ask the mayor and deputy mayor of Bellevue, please have faith in your awesome selves and serve again in those positions, and one of you please serve on the Sound Transit Board. Thank you for your continued public service in the wake of adversity. Thank you. Take a bow.
Thank you. Our next and final speaker on our pre-registered list is Alex Zimmerman.
Hi, my lovely council. Hi, my lovely council. Hi, my lovely council. My name, Alex Zimmerman, President of Stand Up America. I want to speak about Agenda Number Seven, about elect new mayor. You saw good guys, and I know you for 30 years. You know what it means? So this not mayor who can be a mayor? You know what it means? Because you're so good. I know this for 30 years. You never make mistake. You look, what you did with Bellevue. It's a beautiful city right now. You look like New York or Los Angeles. You know what it means? But exactly, you have small problem like everybody have. For example, 90%ish people not vote for you. Does this matter? No, absolutely not. You know what it means? You're good before. You will be good now. You will be good for another 40 years. Is it a matter? No. So what is matter, and what is I don't understand about this? How not legal government, what is not supported by 90 people, can elect a mayor? How is this possible? When 90%ish people don't vote for you, you know what it means? You're not a legal government. When this not legal government, who are you? Are you under US Constitution, state constitution? No. You are junta. You know what it means? A group of people, a Democrat junta. You know what it means? A basic of Democrat who will elect you ear by ear, ear by ear. It's good? It's super. You have same problem, but it's have every junta from South America or from Europe in 20th century. You so good. I only don't understand how you can control this idiot, you know what it means, for so long. It doesn't happen. You understand what it means? But mayor can be good. Yeah, destroy Bellevue a little bit. You know what it means? Make from us a something very terrible city. You know what it means? This not matter? Is this not surprise me? So Agenda Number 666? Who are you? You are real evil? Is coincidence of this Number 666 in Agenda? No. You are a real evil. You suck blood and money from people. In 50%age, totally not feel comfortable. By 100%age, in another 40%age, don't feel comfortable too, but everybody quiet. Why they people quiet? Because you so good, guys. So doing your job for another 4 year, and who will be mayor? Not important, because you stay in here like Polit Bureau forever. Stand up, America. Make me happy. Make everybody happy. Thank you very much.
Just a list of speakers this evening. At this point, we do still have a few minutes of oral communications left. I'd ask if there's anyone joining us this evening who would like to speak to the council, please raise your hand. That includes those online. If you could use star nine. Ma'am, if you could identify yourself for the record, please. Thank you.
Happy Bellevue resident for almost 30 years now. I had not planned to speak, but I'm so moved by Heidi and by Jennifer's departure that I have to say a few words. It's also fitting that I'm wearing black this evening because Jennifer is leaving, and this is truly the end of an era. We don't know yet the new era. I'm not as pessimistic as the previous speaker, but we just don't know. I've been continually amazed by your vast bandwidth, your depth of knowledge, and intellectual virtuosity. Really. I could count on you to stand up for neighborhoods, even in the face of overwhelming opposition. You never relented. I and all former and current neighborhood activists appreciate you and will miss you greatly, and it's really a sad, sad day for many of us. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any additional speakers? Okay, Mayor, I do not see any additional hands. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. So we have reported the city manager. Ms. Carlson, would you like to report out to us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we wanted to give you an update on the Airfield Park Master Plan status and a review of the next steps in the environmental review process. This is an information-only item, and for the presentation, we have Michael Shiasaki, the Director of Parks and Community Services, and with that, I will hand it over to Michael.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson, and good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newrenhouse, and members of the city council, and I'll just look over here and see if, there we go. Thank you. So some time has passed, and so tonight, I would like to provide an update on the status of the Airfield Park Master Plan, but first, let's see. But first, I just wanted to spend a few minutes and provide a little bit of context on the pathway to getting to where we are today. And so, as a reminder, there is a current adopted master plan for Airfield Park, and this plan was adopted in 2012. So the major features of this plan included retained forest area to the north and to the west, two multi-use sports fields, and parking, and a picnic area in the northwest portion of the site. So this is the adopted plan. Here is, but I wanted to move on and spend a little time on the overall master plan update process timeline. So in October of 2021, the council directed staff to seek the community's current preferences and look at the possibility of accommodating an aquatic center at the Airfield Park site, and we will, and in that process, update the 2012 master plan. So we'll come back to this schedule in just a moment. So over the past year, it's been about a year, we conducted, really, I would say, some robust public engagement. That included a neighborhood walk. It included three really well-attended community workshops, along with other stakeholder meetings, and it was reviewed by the Parks and Community Services Board three times, and ultimately, the park board identified a preferred master plan alternative, their recommendation to you, and this was based on elements and facilities that were preferred by the community. In addition, a couple of public surveys were conducted, and the city council reviewed the plan update towards the end of the public engagement in December of last year, so just about a year ago. And I do want to, just for a moment, thank the park board for their review and their guidance and their recommendation, and one of our key partners out there, Splash Forward. So this is the preferred master plan update that received support, I'd say, of the majority of community members, and is the park board recommendation. So on April 3rd of this past year, the council unanimously supported and directed staff to complete environmental review on this preferred master plan update. As you may recall, the site is large. It's about 27 acres in size, and I'll say it's varied and a bit complex. It has existing forest areas to the north and to the west, and commercial uses, and access to I-90 to the south. And I'd say it's important to remember the site's history, and I think you've heard a little bit about that mentioned this evening, that it includes light, in the past, it included light industrial uses. Much as in the name, a portion of this was an airfield, and a portion of the site also served as a landfill. So I'll say the site has a lot of potential, but it is far from pristine. In this master plan, so the updated master plan, it retains those forest areas to the north and to the west. It adds an aquatic center. It's the large, I'll say, tan square that you see towards the bottom of the plan, eight pickleball courts, and other active recreation opportunities, and also includes parking, and once again, picnic areas in the northwest portion of the site. I do want to thank the council for their support thus far in the process, and special thanks to Councilmember Robertson for being, you know, such a champion for all things aquatics, a new, modern aquatic center, and, you know, speaking out for swimming as recreation and also as just a basic, essential life skill. So back to that schedule. So the environmental review process, per SEPA, the State Environmental Policy Act, is now underway. SEPA must be completed before council action can be taken. The environmental review process is an independent process led by the city's Development Services Department, and Development Services, they determine the compliance steps to be followed, and they oversee the review process. As shown on the timeline, the planned SEPA application was submitted in August, and that was after completing extensive details that go into that SEPA submittal. And so, we are now in the period where there's the opportunity for additional community review and opportunities for additional feedback into that, into the Development Services Department. So following the public comment period, Development Services will make a threshold determination and publish that decision. Depending on what that determination is, additional steps for SEPA compliance may or may not be necessary. At the point in time when the environmental review is complete, then a staff will return to council seeking adoption. to council, seeking adoption of a preferred updated master plan. So that concludes my brief update. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shiosaki. So typically, we do not comment or ask questions on the city manager's report, but since this is Councilmember Robertson's last meeting, I thought I'd give her an opportunity to say something.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. I was hoping so much to be at the point where we could adopt the master plan before I left office, but things that are worth waiting for take time. So, yeah, thank you for the comments. I've been working on bringing an aquatic center to Bellevue really since my first term in office, when the first, I think it was just called Splash. Wasn't it just called Splash? Okay, yeah. Former Councilmember Chelman X, nodding his head, was, like, started talking to me at my very first council meeting. And I think that this is going to be a really great project. If you look at the existing master plan and the proposed master plan change, the open space and forest is the same. It's the active recreation area that changes. And as the forward thrust pools that were built in the 60s and 70s are starting to fail or getting shuttered, and our population has only grown, the need for more aquatics has just become more urgent. Drowning being the number-one cause of death of children under four, and number-two for people five to 14. And people who are, people of color, people who come from limited means, have much higher drowning deaths and lower learn-to-swim rates than other people. So it's so important that we have that water safety be part of the fabric of this community. We're between two lakes, there's lots of rivers. We need our people to learn, our youth and adults too, to learn to swim. So I'm really excited about this. And of course, pickleball got added to it, which was absolutely a result of all that public outreach. People are really crazy about pickleball. So that's really, really exciting, too. So I would just really encourage the council to, you know, when we get the SEPA, when you get the SEPA determination, because I won't be here, to adopt it as proposed with any mitigation that's recommended by the SEPA. This is going to be a really important thing. And then, find a way to fund it. It's an expensive project, but Bellevue often dreams big and then finds a way to actually do it. This is one of those things, and it's going to, we're going to have public-private partnerships. We've got two parks levies with funding for the pools. There's the King County money for pools, Pennies for Pools, it was part of the King County levy. There's potentially state money. If the city moves forward with park impact fees, will be money. And when the lodging tax, we're expected to free up some of that. So I think there's ways to fund it. It's going to be hard, but I know you guys are up for the task, and I know that the private partnerships will definitely help with that. And I know that we have some community members who are a little concerned about it, absolutely in the design phase. One of the things that a lot of people don't know that Bellevue does is we have people on staff who design for public safety when they're designing parks. So they make sure that they build, as things are developed, places where people can't necessarily lie in wait, where there's clear sightlines, places where it's safer than the current condition. And so, I assume, and nod, yes, we're getting a nod, that that will happen when this is ready to move to the design phase. This is going to be a really wonderful regional park that I think will make the city better, more livable, and safer for all concerned. So thank you for letting me make some comments, mayor, and thank you for having this added to the agenda tonight. I, was not a small part of my decision to seek a fourth term four years ago, this project. I really want the people of Bellevue to have good water safety, and that means building more pools. So thank you.
Okay. So is that it for you, city manager, on that topic?
Yes, ma'am, that's it.
Okay, great. So next up, under Council Business and New Initiatives, we have two things related to the selection of mayor and deputy mayor at our first council meeting next year, which is on January 2nd. First, we'll be determining how, the process for voting on that, and the second one, we'll be selecting a temporary chair for that meeting. So city clerk, is there anything you'd like to tell us?
Sure. Thank you, mayor. I'll leave this at a high level, since there's detailed information in your packet, but just as the mayor said, we are talking about the process for electing the mayor and deputy mayor, which will be used at your January 2nd meeting. So for everyone's knowledge, state law does dictate the terms and the timing of the election of the mayor, and that is to occur at the first business meeting of the new year. But the council rules are silent, and state law is silent on the process to be used. So tonight, I'm here to receive direction from the council on which process to help you facilitate on that first meeting in January. So in your packet this evening are the two options for process for this election. The first option is referred to simultaneous voting, and that's the process that the council has elected to use in the past five election cycles. So that's for the last 10 years, the council has chosen that option. This process allows for nominations on the floor, and then when no additional nominations are forthcoming, the list of nominees are voted on simultaneously by ballot, by ballot measure. As soon as the nominee has received a majority vote, the individual is then declared the mayor. That person then presides over the election of the deputy mayor. If council does choose to use this process again for this election cycle, the council must establish a temporary rule, which will require a two-thirds majority vote this evening. The second option in your packet is Roberts Rules of Order, and what would be the default for Roberts Rules. And that's a process where the nominees are voted on individually and in the order in which they are nominated. If the council does choose this option, a simple majority vote this evening would be necessary. And with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you may have, but happy to also just take direction. Thank you.
So option one is what we have done the last, I think, four years. So are there any comments or questions on this? And if not, yes, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. I think that the option one has been really very good for the city, and I thought I remembered that at our last retreat, and we don't vote at retreats, but I thought that the council unanimously supported adding that option to our rules going forward, so that we don't have to have this discussion every two years. What's the status of that?
Happy to take formal direction this evening to include that into the council rules at our next council rules update.
Oh, great. So I would make a motion that we adopt, that we use option one for voting, and that we direct staff to add that as the default rule for voting on the mayor and the deputy mayor into our council rules at the next update.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? Okay, not seeing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you. So the next is, we need to select a temporary chair for that meeting. And so, city clerk, would you like to describe this process?
Sure. Yeah, thank you, mayor. Pursuant to the council rules, the election of the mayor shall be presided over by a temporary chair, and that temporary chair is selected at tonight's meeting. So again, the council rules are silent as to the process for selecting the temporary chair. However, historically, the council has used the process from Roberts Rules, which is to take nominations from the floor and then vote in the order in which nominated. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Okay, so the floor is open to nominations, and I think I saw deputy mayor first. Go ahead.
I nominate Mayor Robinson to be the temporary chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So that's done. Now we're on to the consent calendar. Thank you, city clerk. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to put the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we have two public hearings tonight. Ms. Carlson, would you like to tell us about it?
Yes. So our first public hearing is for a proposed sewer easement release, and after a brief presentation, staff will turn it back to the council to open the public hearing. Following the hearing, staff is also seeking council action on the resolution authorizing execution of the released documents. And so, joining us for the staff presentation is Lauren Matlick, Real Property Manager from Finance and Asset Management Department. And with that, I'll hand it over to Lauren.
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. Our staff report this evening is on a request to release a portion of a sewer easement located at 3002 139th Avenue Southeast. On November 6th, council declared this easement as surplus to the city's needs and set today as the date for holding the public hearing. The purpose of tonight's hearings allow, is to allow the public an opportunity to comment on this release. The property is located near the intersection of 139th Avenue Southeast and Southeast 32nd Street, adjacent to Bellevue College. It is being redeveloped as an approximately 350,000-square-foot apartment complex with 392 units, with 20% affordable through the multifamily tax exemption program. The property is directly adjacent to the Eastgate Park and Ride. The existing facilities within the easement shown in blue horizontal lines, whoops, in blue, will be removed and relocated by the developer to the area shown red. Excuse me. A new sewer easement, replacing its function, will be acquired from the property owner at no cost to the city. The portion of the easement in green will remain. Following the public hearing, staff requests council action on the proposed resolution authorizing the release of the portion of this easement. This ends our staff report. I'll be available to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing, listen to comments, if we have any, from the community, and then we can ask questions or comments of our own. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City clerk, do we have anyone signed up?
There is one speaker signed up this evening, and before I call their name, I will also mention that the council did not receive any written comments on this particular public hearing. So with that, I'll call our first speaker. Who's Alex Zimmerman?
Zihail, my dear Nazi fascist and junta, yeah, and antisemitic, yeah. What is mean pogromer, yeah. My name Alex Zimmerman, I want speak about this. Sowich, yeah. Sorry for my French, you know, my French not so good. Can I use different expression, human shit? Because it's much easier for me. Yeah. Yeah. My French not so good. Yeah, so I always confuse when come to problem like this, because Seattle have right now a huge problem. And I go to many council meeting, you know, in Seattle, and people speak about human shit many time.
Mr. Zimmerman, what are you talking about?
I talking about Agenda number nine, yeah, public hearing about 331, yeah, here.
Yeah, well, you're not addressing what the topic is.
Exactly. I told you about Sowich. My pronunciation not so good for this. I use word human shit.
This is the release of an easement.
No, I'm totally confused.
Yeah.
Save Sowich easement located in 302131, yeah? You talk about this?
Before that, it says the release of an existing sewer easement.
Sewer easement, exactly. Sewer easement, it's exactly what is I talking about, talking about human shit problem. It's exactly here.
Okay, this is not what we're talking about, so either you speak to the easement or you do not. Okay, your choice.
No, I don't understand. You have your opinion, I have my opinion about same agenda.
Yeah.
So my opinion only difference than you? You thinking I don't speak what is you want? Or I'm confused.
Mr. Zimmerman, I'm going to ask you to either speak to the easement or to leave the dais, okay?
Yes, okay, I speak to you, I speak about this, it's my opinion. I don't understand why you want what is I speak about what is you want. I cannot understand it. I have my personal opinion, and I'm a professional, I live here for 35 years, so I thinking what is you doing in this agenda? It's not so good. And I explain to you why. I thinking it's not so good.
I think it's time for you to leave. Okay, you're not speaking to the agenda item? All right, so I'm going to ask you to leave the dais. I warned you three times.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
No problem.
I'm totally strange when you have different opinion. This is not exactly what is you want.
So at this point, I'd ask if there's anyone else joining us this evening who would like to make comment to the council on this public hearing? Please raise your hand.
Okay, Mr. Zimmerman, you need to stop interrupting the meeting.
I do not see any additional hands. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Wait a minute.
My apologies, we did have a late hand online.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Patient Yang, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. So I live nearby this, this current easement. I'm just curious, how does this affect nearby neighborhoods, or is this simply just for information?
Unfortunately, it's not a Q and A right now, but we will get you answers to your question. Is there a way that we can do that?
We can certainly circle back with Ms. Yang and answer any questions.
Can we circle back tonight when we do our comments and questions?
Let me see if I can get a hold of her offline and find out what the question is.
That'd be great. Okay, is there a motion?
Was she fully done with her statement or her comment?
Oh, she wasn't. She was making a question. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, mayor, I move to close the public hearing. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we will contact her and get her questions, so that we can ask it and get an answer for her. But does anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay, Councilmember Robertson, and then Deputy Mayor.
I was just going to say, looking at the easement, it looks like, is this site being redeveloped, and they just want to move it out of the way?
Yes, the current easement falls under what will be their building footprint, so they're simply moving it outside of that.
Right. So just for my clarification and to answer the member of the public, it looks like a new easement's going to be granted, so it's just a moving, it shouldn't affect any sewer, sewer...
No service would be affected.
Sewer service in the area. It's just a moving of the easement, and there, I assume that they are granting us the easement for the new pathway of the sewer lines.
Yes, yes.
All right. This seems very routine to me, and I'm supportive.
And then Councilmember Stokes.
I'm actually a good mayor. Councilmember Robertson addressed the concerned citizens' question, so I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. And Councilmember Stokes.
I was just thinking that she, it seemed like she wanted to know if it had some effect on her property, possibly, is a question. Just wanted to talk to her about.
The new sewer easement is going to be entirely within the property being developed.
Yeah.
And like we said, it's, well, it may have a temporary interruption, though there will be outreach for that. But long-term, it doesn't affect service to the neighborhood.
Well, I think that's good to let her know. Yeah, she's just asking for that.
Okay, so Charmaine, were you able to get the full question from the caller?
Doesn't look like we have her contact information in our system, so I can ask her? Actually, she is now disconnected from the meeting. Sorry. I was going to ask, but she is disconnected now.
All right.
Okay.
Well, she knows where to find us, and hopefully, we can get her the information she needs. So...
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Councilmember Lee.
Have you heard this question when you are doing this work from anyone, that you might have some inkling of what she's talking about? I have heard. Okay. Do you see any potential conflict anyway? No?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
Senator Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 10331 authorizing the execution of documents necessary to release a portion of an existing sewer easement located at 3002 139th Avenue Southeast, which has been declared surplus to the city's needs, is no longer required for providing continued sewer service. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and on to our next one. City manager, you want to introduce that one, please?
So the second public hearing is related to the Bell Road Catalyst Project Land Use Code Amendment. This is the first of two items that are on the agenda tonight related to the Catalyst Project. The proposed Land Use Code Amendment would maintain consistency between the Land Use Code and the potential development agreement amendment, which the council will consider as the next item on the agenda. After a brief presentation, staff will turn it back to council to open the public hearing. And then, following the hearing, the staff is requesting council to consider adoption of the amendments to the Land Use Code. So joining for the presentation, we have Liz Stead, Land Use Director of Development Services, and Matt McFarland, Assistant City Attorney from the City Attorney's Office. And with that, I will hand it over to Matt.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Members. Before we get started, we, Liz and I are both very happy to be here on Councilmember Robertson's last council meeting, and we do hope that maybe she can arrange some three-day weekends in the future that spill into Monday nights as well. So as City Manager Carlson mentioned, this is kind of a two-pronged or two-headed agenda item. The first one is the public hearing and potential council action on the Land Use Code Amendment, which would amend the Catalyst Project provisions for the Spring District in the Belred section of the Land Use Code. So the action that staff is requesting of council is to hold the public hearing and then consider adoption of the conformance amendments to the Belred Catalyst Project provisions. Those are in Land Use Code 2025D035, and then if those amendments are adopted, it would then authorize the attendant and complimentary amendments to the development agreement with Wright Runstead. Our presentation is relatively short tonight because we were in front of council less than a month ago with this item, so we're going to give a quick background, we're going to go through the conformance amendments for the Land Use Code one more time, and then give a process overview before the public hearing.
So I'm going to go ahead and take over here, so, good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newen House, Council Members. Just a little background, and again, we're not going to spend a lot of time since we were here so recently talking about this topic, but this is about the Spring District, as many of you have been, had opportunities to be in the Spring District and experience that it was our first and only catalyst project that we had under the Land Use Code, Section 2025D035. So far, the development in Wright Runstead have developed 19 parcels with over 750,000 square feet, and there are still eight parcels that will be developed in the future. There were regular, requirements, Land Use Code for the Catalyst Project provision, and those were around minimum open space and minimum residential, and those have been satisfied through the development to date. Slide. The Catalyst Project Regulations, as they exist in the code today, authorize a development agreement for Catalyst Projects in Belred, and it also provided for a reduced fee and lieu rate for the Tier One amenities that would for, for commercial development be applicable and applied towards parks and streams and potentially regional transfer of development rates. That all, the code that is currently written also authorizes extended vesting of up to 15 years, and it also included conditions for reduced fee and lieu payments for the Catalyst Project in response to the Catalyst Project infrastructure with the development.
And Liz just went through the current Catalyst Project Regulations. The Land Use Code Amendment in front of you, which we've referred to as a conformance Luca, which is meant to conform the Luca to the potential amendments to the development agreement, if you recall. That's needed to require with the Local Project Review Act for development, for the development agreement amendment to be consistent with the Land Use Code. And specific amendments to the Land Use Code that are in front of you tonight would extend the, the vesting period an additional 10 years for a total of 25 years. That's one of the items the council has considered and moved forward at the last two study sessions. There would be a new fee and lieu rate, which would maintain the current fee and lieu rate up until 2027, and then after that, it would go up to 55% of the published rate and eventually go up to 60% of the published rate for the life of the development agreement. And then, for the first time, under these Land Use Code Amendments, council could apply, or the city could apply at its option, the fee and lieu, the Tier One fee and lieu payments that the city receives to support the development of affordable housing. So a brief overview of the council process thus far and also the staff recommendation. I'm going to pick up with the November 22nd, which is what's happened since the last council meeting. If you'll recall, we had the second study session on November 20th, when council moved forward the Luca that's in front of you tonight. We then published the notice of the public hearing along with the, the staff report and the recommendation from staff, which was an attachment to the agenda memo. And the next step is for council to hold the public hearing that's required for a Land Use Code Amendment under the code, and then if council chooses to adopt the Land Use Code Amendment, that will provide the consistency between the adoption of the DA, which would be the next agenda item before you tonight. So in summary, staff's requesting the council hold the public hearing and then consider adoption of the amendments to the Belred Catalyst Project provisions in Land Use Code 2025D035.
So we'll go ahead and do the public hearing, we'll listen to any comments, and then we'll have a chance to ask questions or make comments of our own before we take a vote. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, anybody signed up?
Thank you, Mayor, this evening, there are two speakers on our pre-registered list, and with that, I'll call our first speaker, who's Andy Bench.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newen House, and Council Members. I am Andy Bench, a Partner and Managing Director at Wright Runstead and Company, and together with our investment partners, we own and represent the Spring District. First, we want to briefly acknowledge the transitions occurring on the council this evening. Thank you, Mayor Robinson, for your service as mayor over the past four years, the city has benefited greatly from your leadership. And thank you as well to Councilmembers Robertson, of course, in Barxdale for your service. Your work on the council has had a positive impact on the community and I'm sure will resonate for years to come. I am commenting today in support of the Land Use Code Amendment and Companion Development Agreement Amendment for the Spring District. As you know, the impetus for the proposed amendments is to continue for an additional 10 years, the entitlement framework for the district that was set in 2009. This will allow us to complete the district's catalyst vision to spur development and anchor activity in Belred with a new mixed-use transit-oriented neighborhood at the Spring District Light Rail Stop. We are incredibly proud of what we have achieved in the district and want the opportunity to fully realize the vision with development of the remaining blocks. We are asking for more time because of a unique set of development headwinds that no one could have anticipated back in 2009, including a global pandemic, a new and evolving dynamic between workers and workplaces, and the current real estate market recession driven by high costs and interest rates. Our investment in the district has changed the conversation for Belred. We have shown that it is feasible for Belred to support significant investment and transform from an industrial area. We are confident in the future of the district and we are committed to the district, to Belred, and to Bellevue. Through our negotiation of the amendments with the city, we believe we have achieved a framework that aligns the interests of both parties. The amendments grant us certainty and extra time in our existing entitlements, and in return, the city receives additional Tier One fees and our continued commitment to construct public infrastructure. When the project is finally completed, we expect our infrastructure investment to total nearly $100 million, which goes well beyond what was anticipated for this Catalyst Project. These amendments provide confidence to the city that this infrastructure will be completed. We are also pleased that, under the amendments, Tier One fees can be used for affordable housing, one of our community's most pressing needs. In closing, we are requesting you vote to approve the Land Use Code Amendment and authorize execution of the Development Agreement Amendment this evening. Thank you for your time, and thank you to city staff, including Matt McFarland and Liz Sted for their work on this.
Take an hour break and then come back to the next speaker? Or, or not? Okay, no, never mind.
I see now, yes, Mr. Chalmanac. What come for?
Patiently waiting.
You got me on that one, I will tell you. My name's John Chalmanac, I'm here today as a private citizen, a resident of Bellevue, but I also served 16 years on the dais there and worked very carefully on the Belred Project, was the first liaison to the Citizen Committee, and then indeed, the development agreement for the Spring District. The Luca and the DA Amendment grant the Spring District an additional 10 years to, to basically get the job done. This is my, in my mind, this is about a shared vision and the way that the city works so well with the development community, the community itself, and the city. So it's about completing a shared vision. The project's been a great success. There are only eight lots left to develop there, and I think a lot of the ones got developed in the two years that I spent living there. I heard a little bit about that. It's a great, great neighborhood. It's vibrant, and it's, it's vibrant, it's alive, and it was a great place for me to live. And when you look at the way the handling of the Tier One agreements are, it's a win-win-win, a win for the city, a win for the developer, and a win for the community because some of those Tier One fees can now be used for affordable housing, probably the most vexing issue that we have. I would encourage you to vote yes on that tonight, I believe it's going to be up, up for adoption. And I also just want to point out that Councilmember Robertson spent a significant amount of time working on the Belred plan, a lot of the infrastructure for this, part of the vision for this neighborhood, and I appreciate that very much. You really have been a visionary, you were a great colleague of mine on the city council. We didn't always disagree, but we did so without having to be disagreeable. And I, the city is so much better off for you serving in it. And I also want to point out, you're seated in the seat that I was at on the dais for about six years, and I think I told you, the best part about it was you can see everyone and it's a quick escape to get out the back of the room. So enjoy your quick escape tonight, and I'm hopeful that I'm your last person to testify before you. Thank you, Council Members.
Thank you. There is one additional speaker with their hand raised online, and that is Gavin Haynes. Mr. Haynes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, can you hear me all right?
We can, thank you, your time begins now.
Great, well, good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newen House, and Council Members. My name is Gavin Haynes, Government Affairs Specialist for the Bellevue Chamber. We're commenting tonight in favor of the proposed Land Use Code Amendment supporting the Development Agreement Amendment for the Spring District. The Luca and DA Amendment accomplish two main tasks. First, they extend the terms of the district's existing entitlements so that the full, that the full build-out of the Catalyst Project can be achieved to meet the city and the owner's vision. Second, they recalibrate the in-lie fee contribution required of the future development to align with the city's current needs and priorities while respecting the history of the Catalyst Project incentives. We are supportive of both changes. The city council had questions about the public infrastructure investments at the last study session. We agree with the agenda material summary that the DA provides important certainty to the city with respect to the level of infrastructure investments the project will provide. If the DA is not extended, the city loses the certainty that the infrastructure will be built alongside the Catalyst Project. The certainty in the level of private investment in public infrastructure is in itself a positive aspect of the DA and a reason to advance the amendment. The Luca and DA Amendment also provide the important change that allows Tier One fees to be applied to affordable housing. This change establishes a funding source not available today, aligns with city goals, and is a model for future private investment in affordable housing. It is another compelling reason to support the Luca and amendment. The district is one of the most successful TOD developments in the country, let alone our region. It exists because of the city's visionary hypothesis more than 15 years ago, that an anchor development in Belred could spur transformation of the neighborhood from industrial to a mix of uses appropriate on a regional light rail line. The district is the affirmative answer to that hypothetical, and it can continue to be a driver of change in Belred if the final blocks are allowed to develop as they have always been envisioned. The Luca and DA Amendment will help ensure this occurs, and it is in the best interests of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I would ask if there is anyone else joining us this evening who would like to comment on this public hearing, please raise your hand. Mayor, I do not see any additional hands, I'll turn it back to you.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So any comments or questions from the dais? I think it's pretty straightforward. Okay, is there a motion, please?
There is, Mayor, I move to adopt.
An ordinance, 6770, amending Section 20.25D.035 Catalyst Projects of the City of Bellevue Land Use Code for conformance with proposed amendments to the 2009 Spring District Development Agreement.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes, good. Next up, we have one ordinance. City Manager, would you like to introduce that for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. As noted, this next item is the proposed ordinance authorizing execution of the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the city and Wright Runstead. And so Liz Sted and Matt McFarland are back to give a quick overview of that and to seek council adoption of the proposed ordinance. That, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thank you again, City Manager Carlson, and Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Members. As mentioned, this is the companion item to the Luca that you just adopted. This is the actual amendment to the Spring District Development Agreement from 2009. The council action here would be adopting an ordinance authorizing the execution of the development agreement by the city manager or the city manager's designee pursuant to the provisions of the Local Project Review Act and the Land Use Code Section that council just amended. Very similar to the previous slideshow, we will go through the background, cover the final DA Amendment, a quick process summary, and then the request for action from council.
Thank you, Matt. I'm going to go ahead and walk through what some of the changes are with this DA and what is different from the previous one. So it does change the extended vesting, as I had mentioned earlier, adding an additional 10 years beyond the 15 years that was contemplated in the original development agreement. In addition to that, it does amend the development-funded Catalyst Project infrastructure requirement, it keeps that in place, and that, again, they have been completing that work as they've moved through the project. The biggest change is really the reduced payment of Tier One fee and lose. In the original agreement, the, it was pegged at a certain number at $4, which was actually 17% of our published rate today. We're now proposing through this DA Amendment that we actually change that rate to float with the published rate, so that it will move to 55% in 2027, and then in 2031, it would move to 60% of the published rate, so that will be a more consistent and more predictable outcome for the community. And the last one that we had is that the, in the original development agreement, the fee and lieu rates were not able to be applied to affordable housing for an office development. In this, with this amended DA, you would be allowed to apply those affordable, those rates to affordable housing, so that is the other significant change in this. Wanted to just very briefly go back through and remind you of some of the infrastructure that has occurred on the site and is to occur. So all of the green, including the mini park and the tracks, G, C, and J have all been applied, they're done. All of the blue is what is still yet to be developed as those last eight parcels go through their development, development projects.
And once again, with the summary of the council process, at the first two study sessions in August and in November, council publicly negotiated the terms of the DA and provided feedback to Ms. Sted and myself to take back to Wright Runstead and their attorneys and, and continue the negotiations based on the council feedback. The DA Amendment would be consistent with the Local Project Review Act and the Catalyst Project Code provisions the council just amended. And importantly, after the November 20th study session, Liz and I did go back to Wright Runstead and their attorneys, and they have reviewed and approved the finalized DA Amendment, and we made sure that they had reviewed and approved it before we put it into the published council materials as well. So the council action is a request to adopt the ordinance authorizing execution of the DA Amendment by the city manager or her designee pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 3670B RCW, which is the Local Project Review Act. which is the Local Project Review Act, and Land Use Code twenty twenty-five D oh three five. Thank you.
Thank you. So we had pretty significant discussions about this back in November, and so we asked you to bring it forward, and you're indeed, you're doing it. So are there any comments or questions? Okay, is there a motion?
There is, Mayor, I move to adopt Ordnance six seven seven one, authorizing execution of the First Amendment to the two thousand nine Spring District Catalyst Project Development Agreement pursuant to the provisions of Chapters thirty-six dot seven zero B RCW and Section twenty dot twenty-five D dot zero three five of the Land Use Code.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. So we have two written reports in our packets that we can read, they are worth reading. If you have any questions or comments, you can reach out to staff. And this is our last meeting of the year. I hope that your holiday brings a joyful end to this year and a nice gateway to a happy new year. Thank you for being with us tonight. Congratulations to our council members who are leaving. We will miss you, and we'll be back on January second. With that, we are adjourned.